We're ready to get started. Are we recording?
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Renton Council Committee of the Whole Meeting on this June 28th, the record-breaking hot June 28th. And we just have one issue, one item on the agenda tonight. We're going to talk about department reorganizations. And Ed, I understand you're going to walk us through it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, Council members. Thank you. It is an honor to be here tonight before you to present. I will have a presentation here brought up shortly. There we go. And I'll just take a quick head nod if everybody can see City of Renton Reorganization. Yep, okay, thank you. Then we'll get started. I'm assuming we'll have a few questions. So, tonight I want to put forward a discussion about a reorganization for the City of Renton. It does not affect all groups, but it does affect a lot of them. And hopefully, I'll be able to answer a lot of your questions throughout the presentation so that at the end of the presentation, we won't have as many, but I do expect to have a good conversation afterwards. So, next slide, please. Why reorganize? Well, we have been listening. And when I say we, I mean the collective whole as far as the mayor, the staff administrators, the special teams that we have here at the City of Renton, the teams that have been doing the work for years and years. If anything, 2020 showed us, it was what we can do, but it also showed what we might want to improve. So, we wanted to take a look at some of the things that we've heard through various groups and find out if there's a better way that we can elevate, isolate, and improve some of the services the city provides. Next slide, please. So, who have we heard from? Some of these will look very familiar: community members, city council members, public carings, direct correspondents, commissions, committees, community partners, neighboring cities and regional partners, city staff and volunteers. Again, going through 2020 and 2021 with the pandemic, the murder of George Floyd, and the need to look at our social, racial justice, equity issues, inclusion. It was a very busy year, and we found a lot of opportunities that Renton can improve. And these were most of the places that we heard them: public carings, public comment, certainly things that you've heard, direct correspondence, and certainly the commissions and committees we've had for many years. Next slide, please. This will all look very familiar to you. This is our business plan. All these suggestions and the ideas had come from our business plan, our guiding document. And with the changing of expectations and what we heard, we thought that we could certainly elevate some of the services Renton currently has and maybe put some more attention on them. Certainly, what we heard was the build on the work of social, racial, economic justice efforts, work to address the root causes of those who experience homelessness or poverty, improve engagement, dialogue on issues that matter to the community, inclusion, equity, and environmental sustainability, seek more grants and funding that will create greater opportunity for the community, and then build on the innovations achieved during the pandemic and increase accessibility to services. We had a series of victories throughout the last year and the beginning of this year that we're pretty proud of, but certainly some more opportunities, and we think that this realignment will provide a better chance of success. Next slide, please. As you know, at the beginning of the year, we were able to have a mayor's retreat followed by a council retreat. So, some of the principles that the staff took as far as planning purposes, and when we looked into the services that we were providing and how we might help, the mayor kind of led the way with some of his guidance at the beginning, talking about the change of what we do now and how impactful it is in the future. So, as we sat down as a collective group and had these discussions, he kind of gave us the guidance with the realignment and to be more effective in delivering results, as what's expected to us. So, we're hoping this reorganization will enable us to be on the leading edge. I think some of the ideas you're going to hear tonight will be new and something that some of the other cities are looking at doing or have discussed, but we're hoping to be one of the first. So, next slide, please. How do we do it? Sounds simple in nature, but this is going to be a long process. The moves are somewhat simple, but to be effective, to be successful, to build the teams, it's going to take a little bit of time. But we needed the groundwork to start. So, if we realign our teams, our resources, and make our goals, I think we can meet those goals with this new realignment. Next slide. To give you an overview of what your administration looks like, certainly, we work for the people, the community of Renton, the council, the mayor. And this is directly below all of your administrators and special teams: city clerk, emergency management. And this is kind of the way the structure looks now. Depending on what book you read or Google search you do, the industry standard for a successful supervisor to employee or direct reports varies depending on your responsibility. As you get more responsibility and there's more money involved, you look at a three-to-five-person direct report to be most successful. Anything more than that, there can be vulnerabilities or maybe not enough attention on one thing. So, we really want to focus our attention on specific items so that everybody gets the same amount of coverage. So, if you'll see here, it's kind of leaning towards the left as far as our current structure. The purple boxes you see are the different departments and particular groups that we really look at as finding if there's a better way to do business. Next slide, please. So, with the discussion we have tonight, this would be the realigned structure where we organize the functions and our unified mission with each department. And I'll break each of these down specifically to give you a better explanation of what that is. But as you can see, it's a little bit more equal across the board as far as the direct reports. Next slide, please. What we expect from the change: increased effectiveness in DEI efforts, that's diversity, equity, inclusion, increased community engagement, increased effectiveness in human services and housing efforts, increased innovation in customer service, and increased focus on energy and environmental sustainability. Those might sound familiar from the business plan or some of the requests that we've heard over the past year. Next slide, please. The first change shows a new department, actually two, basically: one new department and one modified or realigned department. So, on the left is the current structure, and the proposed change would be the new structure on the right. And what you see on the left as far as the city clerk, emergency management, communications will be absorbed on the right. This will make sense in just a second, I promise you. So, if we can go to the next slide, please. The first change is the equity, housing, and human services department creation. Next slide, please. With all of these changes and these realignments, they were compared to the business plan and how we can support and successfully achieve these goals. So, in each of these different moves, it'll have the aligned goal that we used, the details of structural changes, and then the expected outcomes for equity, housing, and human services, or the expected outcomes for each of these different groups. On this particular slide, I'll show the org chart and go over the details of the changes. So, as you see, the creation of equity, housing, and human services would include an administrative assistant, diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator, human services, housing, and community outreach. The new administrator would be created, the DEI coordinator from communications would come, create community outreach coordinator, this would be a new position, increased administrative assistant, a half-time to a full-time to support this full department, move our human services program from community service where it sits now, and then move our housing program from community economic development. Next slide, please. So, as compared to the business plan, our expected outcomes from a move like this is to increase the impact of DEI efforts internally, externally. Being the focus of this group, they will be able to look at both internal and external programs, services the city is providing, and evaluate and provide suggestion. This is also one of the places that the newly created or almost finished equity commission would certainly live under. So, this is something really close. As a peek, I was able to see Preeti and Benita's proposal and the notes from all the meetings that we had before the summer, and it looks really fantastic. So, that's one of those new things that you'll probably be seeing soon. But that's something that would live specifically in this group. Increased attention and the support of affordable housing efforts. We have a team right now that is regionally known, if not nationally known, for the efforts they have in affordable housing. This is really an opportunity for us to isolate and kind of elevate the services that they are providing, to kind of separate them and provide them more resources than what they currently have. Increased effectiveness of human services programming to increase community outreach. One of the positions in this proposal is a community outreach. As you create diversity, equity, inclusion groups, there's a significant component of outreach and programs where we have to connect with the community. And this is an individual spot that will help us facilitate those conversations and those meetings and those services more specifically. Another thing with the affordable housing efforts and the human services program, if you remember, the approval of 1590, which was the tax that provides us monies for these kind of services as far as human services, affordable housing, this now, instead of going to five different departments within your city, can be mainly focused in this one particular group so that all these programs that we are able to generate is really just going to a certain group that specializes in this, and they can have those discussions and figure out where best to go. Next slide, please. The change number two is the creation of an executive services department. The details of this are a move from information technology currently resting administrative services, and then the city clerk, communications and engagement, organizational development, and emergency management, which is currently sitting in the executive services currently, which is under me. But this would be to create a brand-new former, it used to be the former deputy chief administrative officer. This is a position that was, I believe, here for many years, it last left, I believe, in 2013. But this is an opportunity for us to bring this back and really isolate and focus on the internal services. So, this would create a new deputy chief administrative officer with the increased scope of responsibility with the screen you see there as far as the org chart, modify the deputy administrator of public affairs to a communications and engagement director, assign the office of the city clerk, emergency management, communications to the executive services department where it already currently lives, move information technology from administrative services to this department, and then move the neighborhood program from community services. The information technology department was something that created from an individual and slowly grew based on the need and just ended up in administrative services under finance. So, to focus finance more on the financial side of things, and to move information technology, a very important and probably the most common change that happens with whether it's problems or programs, raise it and elevate it to another level that's a little bit closer to the mayor's office and council so that we can have those kind of programs and discussions that impact the entire city. And then the neighborhood program from community services, this is an incredible tool that many cities will use closer to the executive department so that the voice of the city, the mayor, council, can be out into the public and into those neighborhoods to address some of those issues that we wouldn't commonly hear. So, it's an excellent, excellent tool. Next slide, please. Our expected outcomes of this are the increased effectiveness and collaboration with internal customers, again, the focus with the deputy chief focusing on the internal services and being able to communicate. One thing that your city clerk will tell you is IT is extremely important, so to have them in the same group can certainly streamline some of our processes, even council meetings and the new hybrid system. Increased innovation and process improvement, increased accessibility and technology for external customers, and increased community dialogue and engagement around goals and priority. Next slide, please. The administrative services department, that is your finance department, and this is just a move from information technology and over to the executive services department, but the creation of grants. Next slide, please. So, the details are to move IT but add a grants management program. This would be funded initially by ARPA, the American Relief Plan, which is one of these things that came out of the business plan as far as taking advantage of or finding more opportunities for the city to use some of these grant opportunities. We are aware, as you know, Doug Levy is very spot-on on all of his observations and certainly his connections, and there's a lot of opportunities out there for Renton. So, speaking with the finance director, grants management program would be fantastic and probably allow us a lot more funding. Next slide, please. The expected outcomes in relation to the business plan are the increased focus on equity and procurement and contracting, increased public engagement and dialogue around resources and priorities, increased accessibility and satisfaction with customer service, this is internal and external, and increased opportunities for the community through a grant management program that benefits every department. Next slide, please. The community services department currently on the left is one of our largest departments, not by personnel, but certainly by the direct reports. They've got a lot of stuff going on there. And so, the move would then basically put some of those positions into the new equity, housing, and human services department, and then focus with the recreation, not just the recreation director. So, if you could, next slide, please. There we go. Details would be the human services program goes to the equity, housing, human services. We'd move facilities to public works and move the neighborhood program to the executive services department. Next slide, please. The expected outcomes would be the balanced workload and the scope of the department. This is, again, refocuses this department on the parks and recreation, increase focus on the community livability, on environmental sustainability and natural resources, pedestrian mobility, and grants and alternative funding options. Next slide, please. Economic development, this is where community development and housing currently lives with the idea of moving that to the new equity, housing, and human services. Next slide, please. And like I said, moving the housing from program to equity, housing, and human services department. Next slide. So, our goal with this is to increase the focus on economic development and post-pandemic recovery resilience, increase the focus on the livability community of the future, sustainability, and environmental sustainability, and the increased capacity for community engagement around community building. Next slide, please. Public works, this is an addition. This would be the creation or the move of the facilities division currently as it stands to go to public works. Next slide, please. And that's the details, is just simply to move the facilities division from community service to public works. Next slide, please. Thank you. And the expected outcomes: increased collaboration on strategic planning and asset utilization. As you know, the city has many, many buildings throughout, and the strategic planning and the re-innovation of what we can use those for. The increased focus on promoting clean energy within our buildings. If you're not aware, I'm sure it'll be pretty soon that our public works administrator is on the process of coming up with some significant focus and a position that focuses on the clean energy that's being used or not being used within the city to kind of create a program that evaluates our systems. And so, this would be a really good one for our facilities group to be a part of. Next slide, please. So, knowing that was very quick, a summary of the structural changes would be the creation of the equity, housing, and human services department. That would be an administrator, the DEI coordinator that reports directly to the administrator. We would need to convert a half-time administrative secretary to a full-time administrative assistant, move the human services program from the community services, the housing program from community and economic development, and then create a community outreach coordinator to schedule all those events. The executive services department would be a new deputy chief administrative officer, the task of really focusing on those internal services, reclassify the administrative secretary to administrative assistant, modify the deputy administrator of public affairs to a director of communications and engagement, assign the office of the city clerk, emergency management, and executive department back, which is already with the executive department, move the information technology from administrative services, and move the neighborhood program from community services. Public works simply moves the facilities from community services and finance creates that grants management, too. Next slide, please. So, a real quick snapshot, two slides that show the realigned structure, and that's the creation of the deputy chief administrative officer for the executive services that has the organizational fulfillment, IT, city clerk, communications and engagement, neighborhood and engagement. Finance would be creating the grants and public works inherits facilities division. And probably the largest change, next slide, please, thank you, is the creation of equity, housing, and human services department, where you have human services with housing repair, and the human services, housing, DEI coordinator, and a community outreach. Next slide, please. Now, I know it says questions. I have a few closing things that might answer some questions for you. The reorganizations in any large organization can be accompanied by fear and skepticism. So, we really look at this as an opportunity for creation and a start of something new from what we've heard, what's been requested from the city. So, I expect a lot of change. I anticipate requests for change. This is the building block to something greater. One of the most important things we talked about was the services we currently do cannot and must not stop because of change, because of moves. We simply have to build the team around that to make it successful. So, no matter what, there'll probably be some fine-tuning and some changes, and this isn't the plan that fixes everything, but certainly it's the start for us to have a larger conversation and find out where we're lacking. The timeline for this is, if I could do it, I would do it as soon as possible, pending all the approvals. But the reality is, we have to go through, certainly HR is going through, and I think they've pretty much finalized job descriptions. The city attorney has to review some code to find out authorities. But I really wanted to put this out in front so that you can take a look at it, have some questions, provide some feedback, so that this can continue to be fine-tuned as we work towards being able to propose this through the proper channels. There's no action being requested at the time, but your questions and comments are always welcomed.
Okay, well, hey, so, thank you, Ed, and thanks also to Armando and to everyone that has worked on this. And obviously, it was a big effort. There's some great ideas in here, some changes that are very appealing to me. And I have more to comment and ask, but I saw that Ed Prince cut his hand up pretty fast, so I'd like to go to the council member Prince.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I don't have a question. I just want to say, I love this. I think this is an outstanding reorganization, and it puts us in a position for Renton to move forward into the future. I especially like bringing back the deputy CAO. That's something that I feel like we've needed for a long time. I love the equity, housing piece. I have no questions or complaints about this. I think this is a phenomenal reorganization.
Thank you, council member Prince. A council member, Halloran.
Yes, thank you. This, again, is an example of impressed but not surprised by the quality of work that comes out of City Hall. This just seems so comprehensive, so well-thought-out, so with such a focus on our future. And I just, again, impressed but not surprised.
Thank you. Council member Benedetti.
Well, thank you so much, Council President. You know, I know that other council members have spoken. I just want to add a couple of comments as far as some things that I was impressed by in this plan. First, I really appreciate the right sizing of the departments because I think that that does make it much easier to be a successful top at that department, and also for the folks in those departments to communicate with each other. I think that right sizing the departments is a really good direction. And I also do like some of the new connections that are being made, particularly moving, for example, the idea of moving the neighborhoods into that, giving us the opportunity to have those connections. So, thank you very much for some great work, and I'm eager to see how this develops.
Thank you. A council member, Perez.
Thank you. I echo pretty much what my colleagues can say, Mr. Van Bailey. You did a pretty good job explaining something that could potentially have been a disaster, and your presentation was very good. There are three things that I'm very happy about. The first one, I remember the first week that the mayor was after sorting as mayor before we knew that the pandemic was going to happen. He said, "Rudy, I have this idea. I think we should start thinking about creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion department. This should be, you know, separate." And then, boom, COVID happened, and one year later, he was very frustrated because, to the end goal, that was something that he wanted to accomplish, and I'm very happy that finally happened. A year later, Mayor Burris is here, and I'm very proud of you for standing up for that commitment. The other two things that I never thought about it and that right now make me very excited are two pieces of the organization that very much are about involving and connecting with our community. One of them, and because remember, you just mentioned it, is the neighborhood program. That neighborhood program has been the heart and soul of our city for so many years, and we need to put attention to that program that is necessary to keep those strong connections. And the other one is the community outreach. The community outreach, we have always done it, but we have always fied with that, and we're doing it to the level that needs to be done, especially with the new technology, with the new, the way that the community these days communicate, are we at the same level that they are. So, I'm very happy that we're putting the attention necessary to have the voices of the community all the time at the table, because at the end of the day, they are the ones that direct all our actions. Thank you again.
Council member, Van.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you so much, Ed, for your presentation. It definitely is lots of information at one goal. Very much appreciate your explanation. I do have a few questions. I know it's still part of the works. But certainly appreciate the mayor and his announcement last week regarding the equity, housing, and human services department. I mean, that's really showing our community that we're future-focused, so very much appreciate your vision, mayor. So, as far as this, and you might not have the answer, and you might, but I know it's still in progress, right? So, we're talking about the equity and empowerment commission, and you mentioned it will be housed under this. Now, if this is the, we're talking about city services, we're talking about contracting to women by pop-owned businesses, so how broad is that? Because I see there's just really more emphasis of human services and housing. Have we kind of thought of the staffing component to that as well?
Let me make sure I have this right. The staffing component for more, not so much the housing, but the equity portion?
Yeah.
And the outreach, the policies. So, that's one of those things, you're right, you know, we've got this to a certain point to get the right players in the room. And I think, you know, before we got too far out over our skis to say, "Hey, it's going to look like this, this, and this," we really need to find out where we were short, to your point exactly. We have the DEI coordinator, which will recognize as most of the work that Ms. Benita is doing for us. That concept, I think, between the administrator, Benita, and those teams is where the growth comes from. How do we cover all those things? Specific to the finance, one of the parts of moving IT out of there is the focus on the financial aspect to include the women minority-owned businesses and the contracting that we do. But all of that would certainly go through this group to be reviewed or that commission so that they can look at that. So, there's more, there's lots of room for growth. I don't have the exact answer of what that will look like, but I'm happy to say that we will have an answer once we get the right team in place to kind of report back and tell you exactly how that's going to look.
Thank you, Ed. And I saw Preeti raised her hand. I think maybe she'd like to help answer that question. Are you muted?
I was able to, I'm happy to answer the question on the equity commission, council member, Van. So, yes, the responsibility to facilitate the equity commission would come under this department. And currently, we're working on details of a proposal for the equity commission based on the direction presented by council at the retreat. And as Mr. Van Bailey presented, we And as Mr. Van Bailey presented, we have provided a draft that, you know, we will, that currently the mayor and Mr. Van Bailey are looking at, and we hope to provide that to you. The city attorney also needs to look at that since it involves creating a commission. But we are hoping that, we've basically taken the input of all the community members that we've met with so that we respect and collect their input. But our goal is to provide that, you know, recommendation to council, and then go forward with creating the commission. But the responsibility of managing and facilitating that commission, we hope will fall under the responsibility of this department, just as currently we have the planning commission under CED and, you know, parks commission under community services. So that's the way we see that this responsibility will be carried out, and staffing will be provided to facilitate the meetings of the equity commission from that department.
Thank you. Thank you, Preeti. Council member Van, I know you had some other questions, please go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you for the clarification, clarification, Preeti, that's very helpful. I also wanted to ask about the position as far as the public affairs. I think it's now modified, the, the title is changed, and what is the, I, I can only assume what is the, the philosophy changing the title, but it's now not under the executive services department, right? It's under the equity and, or is it still is, but just modified? But they're sorry, the flat is too fast. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's still there, it's still in the same place under a deputy chief spot. And in addition to the communications, we wanted to put the effort in the outreach and neighborhood programs.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Is, any other questions, council member Van, or? I suspect that's a good time to say that I understand from the way Ed presented this, there will be opportunity for council members individually to get back with questions, follow-up. I, I didn't know, council member Van, if, if you had any further, or if, I see another council member has her hand up as well, so. Should I move to council member O'Halloran then?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I know that it looks like we're changing some partial FTEs to full or more FTEs and removing, you know, task-oriented teams around, but there's no loss of existing FTEs in this, is that correct?
No, ma'am, it would be a creation of FTEs, which could be planned out. I mean, I could have been much clearer on the work we're doing. We currently are doing a lot of this work, but we wanted to kind of elevate some of the services we found are vulnerabilities or where we get, we required more either financing support. So there's no loss of full-time employees. Immediately, it would be the creation of two and the elevation of, of one.
Yeah.
It's the same work, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted our team to hear that very clearly.
Yeah, there's no loss, there's no loss.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member O'Halloran. And if I could jump in here, I, I was just going to say that I, I appreciate the importance of that question that was just asked, and to just sort of along the same lines say that I know there's, first of all, I would just like to reiterate, I agree with the other council members, that, that the realignment looks really good, and I can tell you've really put some focus on those items that we've covered in the business plan. I thought council member Prince covered it very succinctly, I very much agree with everything he said. And then, but I did want to say that having been with the city for a long time, I, I remember how we kind of got to the organization we had. And in many cases, it's the, you know, the innovation of somebody in a department that comes up with a new program, and then it's just sort of naturally that new program goes into their department as they nurture it and grow that, that program. So I, you know, so something like the housing repair program, there's been people that worked really hard, the neighborhood program, people that conceived the idea and then grew it. So it's very important to me that the, that our staff that have worked so hard in these understand that as we're realigning these programs, you know, we, we do it in a way that they don't feel that, that we've taken it away from them, that they understand how much we appreciate any program that they've grown, that's part of the equation going forward, even if it gets new leadership, their work is, you know, they're still going to be important resources as, as we transition. And, but it, but I think it also makes sense, as some of those programs have become bigger and more successful, and they, they should be merging together, just, just like you're looking at here. So I'm very, very supportive. And I see Mr. McGurven has his hand up, council member McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, yeah, I thought I ought to weigh in as well and say I also love it. I, I think everything is very logical. I tried really, really hard to find something to criticize, and I, I just wasn't really left with anything. I think council member O'Halloran asked the one question I was sort of thinking, just to, just to double check, I was like, ask president, it didn't seem like we were losing anyone, but to make sure there wasn't. Sometimes I know when realignments happen, you would get someone lost in a crossfire, and a position gets eliminated, or someone has to essentially apply to move up to that newer position. So glad to hear that doesn't appear to be the case. And I will say how much I appreciate the creation of the, the new department on equity housing, human services. I think that really does center our values for what we put forward on the business plan. And, and knowing as, as much as we've been a very cross-departmental, non-silent organization, I, I mean, I, I don't think, you know, I, I think these organizations make sense, but I don't think that's going to stop the collaboration we've seen previously between departments. And so I hope to see lots of that going forward, but very excited for the future with this.
Great. Okay, well, that's a lot of support, Ed and Armando, and the staff for the fine work. Any other comments or questions from council members at this point? You know, I'll just, I'll just say to, then sort of in closing, Ed, can you kind of clue us in, I think you sort of said it, but, so how do you see, you know, what, what is the next step? Do council members email you if they have more questions?
Yes, they could certainly email us, you know, like any good plan. You know, we've had, like I said, I want to give credit to a lot of different people, certainly the mayor's guidance and his, his decision-making, every administrator. We've had special teams that had good conversations, some million names like Mark Santos Johnson, Anna Bonn Miller, Mary Jane Vette Cleef, Christie Rollin was a big part of this. So we constantly change it, as recently as today. So I, I didn't want to get too far into the weeds of what might, might happen or put too many constraints, but we are open to the idea or missing pieces, like council member Bonn had brought up. Those are important to us. So they can email me certainly, and we can, we can have those discussions and bring those to the team to this most impacts, because I really want them to have the autonomy, the support to be successful in these. And I think now with everything's going on, 2020, the, you know, grants money's coming in, we're real, reimagining the city of Renton, this is a perfect time for, for us to be more successful. So yes, please feel free to email me, that probably would have been the faster answer. Oh, geez.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, well, unless there's any other final comments at this point, I think we'll, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. We've got a 22-minute break, you get some ice water and adjust your fan, get ready for the council meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.